I didn't know. Thank you.
Okay, my challenge to order the floor right here, if you don't make your cell phone ring, just turn it off or we're going to be like, why tonight? Can we begin with the religions?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
If you're trying to be visitors when they're here, please sign in and your arms good.
May I approach the bench?
I know your arm's down.
So this is the truth, you've got one year covered. I am very amazing English. If they happen to sit down, please let me know. I'll catch them. So I'm being serious. There's no way you're off of that.
No, that's skills.
He must sit down, let me know.
Sure. Steve Garcia, Catherine, Angela Brown, Jenny Swills, Jasper Gerstert, Keith Goche, Karen Shields.
So as you've noticed, there are only three of us at here at original part. Apparently we had five members here, two of the five in total. We do have two other members in the audience, but I guess they were not seated for the original hearing participating from over there.
I didn't call raising their right arm.
I didn't say anything.
Yeah, but yeah, I'm still putting you here. You're still there. I said a non-seated. Raise it.
I'm not going to read the adopted policy because everybody, I believe, was here last time. They were applicant of tenants and then we will of course take commentary from the audiences. And Lisa, can we verify that this meeting was advertised?
Yeah, we, it was advertised as a radio meeting in December of last year in the Delaware Gazette and this was table. This was the table hearing.
We have some meeting minutes from our meeting on September 24th. Do we have a motion to approve those meeting minutes?
Okay, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Catherine?
Yes.
Mr. Gerstert?
You don't have to. If you're able to review them and feel like they were.
Yes.
So we have a continuation from your for the 7000 program, which is table from 2007. And applicants are here with provisions. We have to hear what you have to say.
Well, thank you so much for having us back. I am Sarah Sanders, who chairs the planning design. I want to talk you through the changes that we've made since the last meeting to address some of the comments that were received.
Smart and failing. Here's the hand up for the 19.
All right, the primary things that we tried to address were the western side of the site. We heard that you guys wanted a little bit more framing on that side, a little bit more intentional design for useful spaces. We added a walking path that extends off the entire west side of the connection down to the south of the property and to the multi-use path on the north side of the property. Along that pathway, there is a total of three extra benches to the sitting in the north section and then one that's in the activity note on the south, which is also further defined with the mound to change to allow for better drainage and also for the path to go through on the west side of the mountain. We defined that space a little bit more with some additional landscaping and added a bench down there as well. We've increased the commitment to free picnic tables and shelter on the eastern activity space. Per comment of the fire department, we've been ahead and increased all the internal open space pathways to snakes peak, which is their common event, leaves snakes in the six or seven hours. The other main thing that we addressed was the southern buffer. We are committing to either a three-foot mound or a three-foot hedge along that property line. The reason why we're putting either or is just we're not sure that engineering can do the mound. So the mound is not possible. Engineering has to hold that three-foot height. Continuous evergreen screening there. In addition, we're also, we've put a set of evergreen trees at each property line. So each property line will have three full-size evergreen trees as well. Additional things were added to the text just to clarify any things. We went ahead and increased the amount of square footage per home. So we're saying that the minimal livable building square footage for all residential structures will be 590 square feet for ranch style homes and 2300 square feet for two-story residential. And that's an increase from what is Indian code, all that whatever required. We also clarified the areas on the west side of the site where we have a low, a low-mo meta mix. We've defined what that's going to be and then provided an example of the potential cemex that would be used in that area. Primarily going to be grasses and wildlife plants that are three to four feet in height and full growth. Standard metal maintenance practices and mostly native western types in that meta. The next few figures are just some images of our current pyramids that we sent to house in this area. Again, two-story and drainage style homes. In the pack that we provided, there was a few more than I put on the slides here. But it gives you an idea of the kind of homes that we're expecting to build in this area. And that is all the changes. This is the reiteration of the site plan to the thesis.
So. I don't remember if this was in before, but. But I marked the exterior colors and the spars. I'm having to see if the editing was of all of that now. The 25 percent, we're not just trying to block. So are these going to be defined ahead of time? And the reason why I ask is because we have eleven to issue in a neighborhood where in a neighborhood that they're. There was supposed to be a front lawn or sidewalk and then it being a front lawn. So how, how will that be? How will that be determined? Will that be determined ahead of time or how? And how, how will we be able to manage by or something?
Well, all it takes is one badass. So the side across the street, we had smaller lots over there and those had to be pre-programmed. Otherwise, you couldn't have gotten a side by the garage. Now, on this side, everything's an eighty-foot or greater lot. So every lot technically could have a side by the garage. So pre-programming it, I suppose if we wanted to go in and say, these must have the side by the garages is one thing. But, you know, if it's the, like, the two at the very front, if that's, we can do that. I have no issue with that. It's just, you know, interior wise, definitely don't know if it matters as long as that 25 percent are great.
Well, what I'm thinking is, I mean, you're releasing these lots at different, at different rates, at stages, right, of construction?
Yeah.
And, yeah, so two phases. And I've always had this question and that's why I'm asking it more directly now. At what point do you decide, oh, we're behind in the amount of side by the garages?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't, I don't deal with the marketing, with how these guys sell these things. That's a really good question. Really good question.
Because I mean, like, you can't have one where there's one we, well, you can't have one where it's one we land, but it has to be the footprint of house, right? And you need what, another twenty feet for the sidewalk?
Yeah.
From a backing out of the garage protectors?
Right.
Can you tell I've done this? So there are some lots that it's going to be tight on depending on the floor plan of the house. So that's why I think, I, I would appreciate it being, and I would recommend that there at least be half of them flat, that those would have to be side loaded so that we're not having any issues as we go along.
Okay, so the recommendation, if I understand it correctly, is a minimum of fifty percent of the required drives. Be pre-programmed, yeah.
Yeah. So it's like twelve.
And you can find it, I mean, obviously you guys would love that if they were all side loaded, like, yes.
And they don't have to be. I mean, that would, that would kind of be, you know, I know that there's an extra cost, obviously, with that, so. It's not that. Usually the group structure has to be different. But I, I would really appreciate if we could do twelve out of the twenty-three, pre-programmed twelve out of the twenty-three.
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue.
Okay.
We can do that.
Okay. Like I said, we, we now have an issue of where it happens and it's been a question that we've had as a group for a while of how are we making sure that they're getting to these numbers? So. The next thing I had was the dimensions of the lot. I would so love to see that come out. What I had here in my notes was really, it went along with that, was really that, and I just have to get this off my chest because every, every person who comes in says the same thing. And so your open space includes the ponds. And I get this is a very tight and more awkward layout right here. But open space are, open space is not, ponds are not open space because usable open space is, is not, ponds, I mean, they're not open enough. So they're retention ponds. So a detention pond. So really, when I see what the usable open space is that people are going to be using, it's the park and it's the side right there. So I don't know if that gets to the twenty percent, if you're close on it. I, I think that you have enough, but I, I'd really like to get away from calling the ponds open space and calculating that acreage into the open space because I think it, it gets, it's very deceiving for how much open space there actually is. I did have a question about those activity nodes though. So the one that is down near those houses, I was a little bit concerned about, it's right in backyards. So I know you have trees there. But with the trees, I didn't think that there was a mound there, right?
No, we didn't have a mound for that end of the lot.
So what I guess if you call it an activity node, what does that mean to you guys?
It's a place for people to gather, kids to play, pack, run around, play rugby.
Okay, all right. My only, I mean, my only concern with it, with theirs is because it's literally right behind four, five houses. So. I don't think you're going to want to. I don't know if you would move part of that mound up in front of it. But obviously, in neighborhoods, a lot of times, people, even though they can't claim to come in it behind your lot line, they still kind of assume that area. So just my overall thought is people that buy that area wouldn't.
We did look at putting the mound in behind here. It comes with drainage issue. The upstairs said that it really wasn't a good idea for us to put it on.
Things that I think, cool.
Yes, yeah. As it is, drainage on that side is an engineer difficulty. It was helpful that we split it in half. Actually, they could have managed with that. And he said if we put the mound over, it's just going to cause some drainage problems. That's how it ended up with a lot of, I mean, wetter areas back there than what a lot of drainage had.
Okay.
The drainage on this site is.
It is, yeah. And that's why I was saying, I know that the site is very difficult.
Yes.
As is the one just on the other side. Okay. I think that was really, those were my, those were my biggest things is. I think everything else looks pretty good. I mentioned that you want to increase the size of the, the size of the walkways, internal walkways that we did bring down. I would love to see one more lot taken out. Like that lot, twenty-eight, where the, I think that's twenty-eight, what's that? Twenty-eight. The one that is right in front of the activity node. It could create more park space. Idea. But that, like I said, that's, that's my thought, so. And thank you for putting that screen behind the houses. That more than that, I think that's, it's going to be a benefit for both sides, so.
Few things, what I like, I definitely like that southern landscaping border. I think that's a good solution for temple and the residents. Obviously, there is a belief that some of the people that will buy there actually do want to back up to that. They see it as an advantage, they see it as a benefit. But just from the perspective of, you can't control who buys the lots. I like the fact that there is some separation. And I also, I like, I mean, another big one, I agree with Angela, definitely having the walking path come all the way around is great. I also like that it terminates at that southern property, which creates an access if you wish to get to the temple without necessarily going through people's personal property. I know we had, that came up last time where we felt it probably needed, but how do you do it? I like that, that just the fact that if you aren't handed all the stuff, you can come second. Through the sidewalk, well, that could kind of create a big loop there to continue on. So I like the way that's done. The activity nodes, I like what you've done there, creating some spaces. At this point, I'll be honest, I'm not too concerned about what they might be from the perspective of, I actually looked at it a different way. Having been in the HOA a couple of times, actually liked some space that is pre-defined upfront because a lot of times with the developer builds and puts in, I have six years down the road, the residents decide, well, we have X, but you know what? We really like this because it's just, you know, that's what's in fashion. That's the new thing that seems to be going in. So it gives them, I think, you know, at least one space, maybe the two where the HOA maybe has a little bit of say to what they do, but it's a predefined space where they control it. Obviously, it gets into their visions and all that stuff, but not having it all predefined for them, I actually think they'd be in the long term a little bit of a benefit. Now, I will agree, I had brought up last time too, I would like to see one less lot and what I targeted last time was twenty-eight. Just from that perspective, I think, you know, from a, from a future, something may happen that the neighborhood residents want to do. My guess is that it's going to be not necessarily under the power lines, it's going to be around that activity node in that whole sack area, twenty-eight, so getting a little more open space there. It also gets rid of the divergence and then you got, like, just imagine that, so. Those are really, when I look at it, I like the definition on everything you've done. I like the fact you added pictures because I know we had a lot of question marks on it, but you can give me a square footage, but give me a better flavor of what you're expecting. It makes it a lot easier to kind of look at it and see how it's going to fit in from a standpoint of material, just construction, overall size. Look and feel. I appreciate that detail you have on the low-mo area, the low-mo. But, so yeah, I like all the changes. The only thing I still kind of have out there is, you know, the activity node, I like the landscaping to separate it, but I still would like to see that in one extra lot. Definitely in the final plan, I think, having all the fleshed out of the landscaping plant and the specifics of how you might, to Angela's point, try to shadow or block some of the view and definitely block the folks that might back up to it from a perspective of encroaching into common space. It happens, they'd be amazed at the arguments they were, people were going to do. So over lot lines because it only will ever be defined at build. Once all, once, once they move in, all those structures come down, all those lines come down. They know where the definition is. So anything you can do to kind of help that out. I think more so there because you've got so much landscaping in the front, but in that kind of back area, you are going to have some question marks. So anything you can do there from a standpoint of landscaping to help not only separate, but really define out what belongs to people that are buying lots and what is more the common space. So with that to be done in.
Yeah, that could end up being a two rail horse fence, some law or structure, yeah. So. Or with the civil engineer who's here, I know he hasn't done the final, he says we could do town.
Yeah, I, I like everything. Just again, the one, I would still like to see the one lot removed to get the, remove that divergence.
So I echo what Angela said about identifying potential for the side by the garage. I know what developed did, the lot, the side by the garages were not what was sold first and then towards the end, they had a couple lots that they were required to put side by the garage, so I mean, not the best lot. So your thoughts went on, but I, I think it makes a lot of sense to define that up ahead of time. And like you said, one, one bad apple kind of takes the barrel and we've been there and felt a little burned and, you know, really our only option then is to tell you to tear it down, start over, or nobody wants that. Nobody wants that. Anyway, just a thought, a suggestion. You know, as to the divergence for the extra lot, you know, I don't feel this hundred percent unreasonable to say, you know, it's a split and we're just rounding up, we get that, which we don't prefer that everybody knows purchases this, but it's what, point four-six extra? Seen a lot worse and.
Really?
Yeah. So they can live with it and still have luck, I guess, as you want to say. Other than that, I like that you did help a lot with all the buggers and the caprice. I do have a question on more request. There's an existing house there and if you remember what we said about bugging through that property. But is that, this, oh, that house is going away. No, I don't think it's there anymore. Yeah.
I think.
Okay, I think mine, for some reason, I thought it was still possible. And then I'm not as concerned. I like, I like your elevation to futures, I guess, I think. Angela's point that, you know, water is counted as open space, that's the way the passage is written, yada, yada. We're hopeful that neighbors will have useful, usable space and I think overall you've done a nice job with that. But yeah, the water, you can do, all the signs say, you know, no, no hunting, you got fishing, you got swimming, you got geese, I don't know. So it's pretty to look at and it's, you know, in a pool or something in a track, it's pretty.
Just to speak to that, we do need the requirement without the ponds. So the ponds are really just extra space, but we do need the requirement for open space to be dischopped up. And I believe these.
Didn't we have that exhibit at our last?
Yes, and I'm pretty sure that, yeah, other than the development plan in the side data table, we separated that out for maybe the open space. If we didn't, I apologize, we shouldn't do. But I'm, I know that even without the ponds, we need to require them.
I think it's more of this philosophical discussion and this argument against, yeah. It's frustrating, yeah. Anyway, ready to get into that?
One point is, I want to thank you for putting in the secondary rear yard, you made Tony Inspector's job a little bit easier.
Right.
Having said in that for a number of years, that definitely helps. Appreciate that. He might do.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta test him.
Do so, cheer over it. I, I think it's pretty good that way. I, I welcome that. Thought as far as Garcia's own, the extra lot, you know, it's not enough to throw me off. You know, we're not talking about multiple lots and so on. So it's whatever they decide what they do, what you want to do as far as a compromiser or not. But other than that, I like what you've done with the mounting and landscaping. And I realize that some of the orders, probably with the water flow, so I know you can't probably go to the whole mountain across there because that, we get on requirements for mounting on pieces probably at five. So I appreciate what you're doing. I just wanted to ask one more question that is, are you going to have multiple builder statements? Or have you decided, or are you enjoying the development?
We haven't decided that yet. It's interesting, as soon as your meeting minutes or something hit, hit the, it, it's something, I mean, I'm going to be talking to all spirit guys. I don't know how they roll in here. Yeah, we read Brooklyn Township first and it's like, we want to talk to, you know, Saya. But Saya doesn't really talk to you. So. We don't know. The original intent was that this would be more like a custom instead of a tract home building. I read this, he knows a lot of people that love to live here and they could all bring their own builder. But, you know, I, that's the intent.
And we don't have many of those in the unit either, so that is, that would be nice.
Yeah, and even if it got split between two or three, you know, I, but yeah, these guys have to take long to control the thing, which is great for them, but. Yeah, I just don't have enough model choices to make it that southern, that southern vision. I might get that, but.
Jenny, anything you?
Yeah, so, you know, I do, looking at the open space at Long High Road, it does kind of mirror what's, what was that in May Meadows across the street with that big kind of green area at the front. As far as the side load garages, I mean, I know for May Meadows that we required at first, maybe through the trustees, those first houses to be side loaded, so possibly considering one, two, three, forty-five and forty-six being side loaded. I mean, my opinion is like, if we're going to have a lot, the development across the street where, I mean, and one of those houses is not a side load, that was a big issue, we almost kind of tear down that house. So why would we, as a matter, you know, looking at the area, if we could have those designated, that would be nice, in my opinion. The low-mo, is that all? The low-mo, is that all of that area behind?
It's the darker colored green. So we created the activity nodes that are the lighter colored green. They're actually gonna be maintained as turf grass, right? So the, that activity node is actually defined by the low-mo. So it'll create fun, fun space where I would have enjoyed hanging out of that one.
And in the year, we're kind of torn because we want to maintain the role character. And I know that's why I love to have these, the low-mo zones are promoted. But in terms of practical application, everybody hates them. The people in the residents of the community, all those people on that side are complaining about it. Why is that we really involved? Probably didn't realize this when you moved in, but that's actually a low-mo. Is it just once a year that you want to see them?
Yeah, they typically, here, let her answer.
The overall maintenance changes depending on what you actually plan. But typically, a low-mo is going to be in the fall and in the spring.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like, for example, here, right behind this, or next to the cemetery in Berlin Manor, that's a low-mo. And the people along Trescher Road complain that critters are getting into their backyard. It looks like weeds. And it's really hard to keep the weeds out. So I feel like that's gonna look like tall weeds. Nobody's gonna like it and it's gonna be kind of a nuisance. Like, how do you keep the weeds out? The question. So I, I know we kind of tug at maintaining the role properties of being out here, but it's a lot of, that's a lot of low-mo.
Well, I mean, that's a good point. I don't disagree with you. And one of the things that, if you look at the landscape plan of the H.O.A., even as far as under, we have had the low-mo off the backs of people's lots. So that way, the H.O.A. association is actually mowing behind their houses. So critters literally aren't at the property. Now, they're still in there. They are in there. We know that they're in there. That's kind of the beauty of it, too. And, you know, weeds, they are, they are weeds, but there are also a lot of flowers. So the beauty's in the, in the wall, I guess. But they're not thistles and things like that. They're, I don't know, look at the list, vervain and nodding onion and all kinds of, you know, so that way, there's a nice color system. It's kind of like the stuff that you've been up to the Pumas Zoo, like the old mountain photos like that. And different times of the year, it's in the college. It's pretty neat. If, if, I mean, I don't know if any of us have any issues with it because of something else, to be honest with you. We thought it was better buffer to the railroad track in an area where we don't see a whole lot of activity. And wildlife corridors and things like that, to me, it seemed to make sense. But so maintaining the moat edge around the houses, so we don't have to complain. We're not at side reserve or recovery township and around the pathway. So that, there's like 10 or 15 people pathways, too. So you're not like rubbing up next to those things as you're walking through there. So it keeps it back, like if you're going to a metro park or something. So that's kind of that would.
Maybe if it was, I guess, and I'm not saying unfortunate, but I mean, maybe it would be better. Or it's just, so is this all the low-mo too? Maybe if it was not this, then this, I don't know. Maybe you guys can.
Oh, like go through the inside portion of the house? And that could be done, too. That way, it's the back side of the path, they go, don't mow 10 feet on that side of the path. Maybe it comes, becomes easier. Believe me, I'm not, that's not an issue.
I, I like that idea of not, of keeping it all, I don't think it's only inside of the house, to the back of the houses, like that whole easement. I, I like that idea of that all being more usable space.
Okay.
That's about it. That's all I have.
Okay, well, it's, and that's good thoughts. Because exactly, starting to find, those records, you don't miss my yard.
So we've got a lot of questions on the mission, and your audience kind of seeking to speak.
Yes, I'm Desmond Holmorn, 3664 here. I've brought, leading council to Shreeda, the Shara Temple, Temple 5. And I have some questions about the buffering, about the township channels. The buffering is a place to help safety as a place of noise. Last time I was here, we did express concerns about the noise, but also lighting, et cetera, during temple ceremonies and festivals and the like. And we're still in active conversations with Seven Hills about this particular issue. But I am curious about how does the township handle the requirement for buffers with non-patal uses in a situation like this? I know you have that, a certain temple, or this before, but is it, are there any requirements that you will get into as far as sound studies or height of buffering, height of buffering for sound issues? In your note, I'll admit, I have a great code fairly, but I'm just curious as to how you give the buffers. Because right now, we're in a position to maximize the buffer for the sound lighting as much as possible. Or potentially look at, we had discussions of the sort of sound easement, just to minimize complaints in the future. People are aware of the property. Oh, there's a, there's a sound easement. We have a temple here, we should expect to, festivals, et cetera. Things are customary with temple as they practice their, their religion. And the discussions with the temple at this point is, you know, sound easement for this entire property. You still are aware of it or to be engaged. And unity engagement as this development is being built out. So that you can, you can put information out to the public, whether it be assigned on the property, wherever, come in, speechless, so we can tell you what you should expect when you become our neighbor. But one of the things we're interested in learning more about is definitely how the township handles this when they do developers. Just say, okay, but of the, this length of trees and this, this footage, basically, that's very important question of, of comment.
So I think what I, what I associate it most like, most similar to, I guess, is over here with Berlin and Glennie and the pines. And because there's sports and lighting and everything going on all the time. So is there anything, I don't, I don't know, I'm asking, is there anything that? I was on the board going, Glennie was approved. And I think the timeframe, I don't think that was. I don't know, any dialogue about sound? Maybe have, you know, noise work systems and some quiet rooms and things like that. That is, oh, and that's outside the purview zoning for that matter. So really, with the only requirement for adjacent non-catal uses as well, we require fencing if you have development up against an agricultural use. That's the only ordinance of that nature that I'm aware of.
And then I think we all have a figure, it's just kind of the vehicular use, like more automobile light issues. Which is kind of what the hedge and things are on those lines. It's more to prevent headlight, direct headlights in the back some places.
You also, you also can't have lighting go off of your property to let neighbors. That's, and that's a debate also.
So how do you clarify? Because I'm thinking, how do we protect everyone for the temple, right? But how do we protect the neighbors? And so protect both of you from annoyance of each other, right? This is kind of maybe the way to say it, but. So from a light perspective, parking lots being there, what is the lighting? And you may not know this yet, but would that become an issue? Because you're saying you can't light up off of your property. But again, I would kind of look at it as the same as when there's football games over there on Friday nights. So you know what I mean? It's, I don't, I don't know how that's handled.
Typically, it's had shielded on the lights.
To the extent possible?
No, it's shielding on the lights to keep it off of other people's property.
Yeah, that's, that's the caption because it says it can't spell off the property.
I think from, just a, from a practical standpoint, mentally standpoint, when you look at, say, lighting, that becomes a little bit of a more strict forward issue. And it says, no law's going on property. That's generally classed to everybody. And there's, you know, from a religious standpoint, I'm not aware, it's not holy, that we have some sort of religious requirement, like come, go across the property, that, that makes sense. The sound issue is another story. It's one of the things we're, we're looking at here, is trying to be more proactive as to what might happen in the future. And if someone goes to the temple and say, hey, we have a zoning ordinance that says you can't exceed the desirable level for your sounds, you know, we're gonna have a, you know, there's gonna be an issue there because those zoning ordinance, it's almost gonna apply to religious commissions that are exercising their religious duties. So that opens up the issue of potential for sound complaints in the future. Someone might go to you, the zoning folks, or just the township trustees in general, and say, how do we have a stop this noise from occurring? So, you know, we're still interested in finding out what's the best way of kind of incentivize them above, make sure no one, unless they need you for, kind of certainly doesn't want to have future complaints. Then, no one wants to get any orders of, of, of issues in the future. It sounds like now is the best time to deal with that. Most certainly, to take your discussions with Seven Hills. But I always feel like it's a better field for what your zoning ordinance has, what your neighborhood resolution has in terms of your authority to make requests to the developer. You certainly don't want to drive anybody into a situation where you request the developer to clearly not within the zone. That they want to get a feel of what they're doing in such a situation.
Yeah, there's nothing within the zoning house that, that applies to noise that I'm aware.
That's a statute that the trustees. It is a, noise issues are in your trustees.
I like your idea of proactive and sound easement, not clear with, don't really know how it works, but it sounds like a good idea. I think proactive outreach is always a good idea. But once again, it's not always, you know, it's just run all people in the situation.
There are provisions of the zoning resolution that's raised for public health, safety, and noise placement, and there should be landscaping and streaming for non-patal uses. But as far as I can tell so far, I agree, that it's kind of open-ended. Do whatever we want, depending on the situation. I guess I'm more interested in knowing if a private developer has a, a zoning resolution on issues as to what the, what are the limits on the township? Is it really just an open-ended, we'll, we make our mind up, depending on the non-patal uses? Or are there limitations set in place to make sure the township is requiring to construct a 200-foot town area? Which would be.
Don't be surprised. Do you have any insight on any of this?
First, you can't take something that hasn't worked yet. There's, there's gonna be complaints. Like you stated, no one can stop you from practicing your religious practices. Sound, sound ordinance or not. So I don't think that's something you have to be concerned about. I think that no matter what you do along the slot line, the noise is gonna be there. That's, first of all, it's a subdivision. That's the case in every subdivision. There's guys running combines out here at midnight along the backs of subdivisions. That's just like this. So I get, I understand the concern. I think it is a bit, not unwarranted, but exaggerated.
Well, it's the issue of, it's a civil lawsuit, someone can file a lawsuit for noise.
People can file lawsuits, they're everything.
But it's, it's just how, how you, how you protect a temple like that, something like that in the future. We're discussing the sound issue. It is, it is a situation where there's always a defense to these type issues. If this was here, when you built, when you built your home, what are you doing here? What was going on? And but it's, it's another thing to say, the property had it even on, say, hey folks, there's a religious institution here that practices a certain religion, which is your custom. We should expect to see that there. Which is, which is, if they want, I, for a fair reference, they'll say, well, there's a lot of these on here. But that's, that's an issue between the temple and the government. Not to, we're thinking of a zoning commission here.
I guess we gave you a nice answer. I mean, I think.
No, no, sorry, it's, it's no.
Raise a good point and.
No one having any handle on the situation, these situations, especially with the lighting at school.
Laying in noise, yeah. And I think of the laying in noise of, I mean, those games can go to 9:30, almost 10 o'clock, you know, on Friday night. So I'm often there.
I live right across from the, the football stadium, so.
Yeah. So I, I kind of assimilated to you by being there, honestly. Know what's around you, that, you know, but from a zoning perspective, there is something outside the, the regular noise, which wouldn't apply, you know, to this temple anyway.
Any other audience comments, thoughts?
I can say this, you get into the, the, uh, I'll make this one. And it would be nice to have kind of some of these men studying lighting. So you know, I think that's a lot of, not an issue. So we are not stopping any kind of devil, we say, but we want to manage your rights for temple. If that is the only reason, it's a great effort to us and we use the position somewhere. And they, they do not start to, so that's the reason we want to succeed in that. So we don't want to create any kind of purpose, or say, to, and as I said, that's, we have that to, or something. This topic, you know, is actually, so, but it would be nice, uh, for any kind of instance, like, playing those lots and the other things, definitely getting captured. You can see some headspace rights and some markings of, of songs because we can, even, and so. Yeah, I think we wanted to bring up some of, and, and, and.
Credit her, I mean. What's your first name, Robbie?
Yes.
Robbie, from last prayer.
Other comments? No? Yes, sir? You can have something to say, okay. All right, so we're asking, is your intention, so can I ask us for a location?
Yeah, I'd like to ask you for a, so discuss the low-mo. I think it's a great idea that we move that back to the other side. So just define it on the other side of the pathway. Programming the lots as to which ones you're aware, I think you do that. I really like the idea of establishing ones, to me, that, that have to be. And I think the first five makes sense for sure. And then after that, is 50% the number? I don't care, you can do 100%. You know, I, it doesn't matter. Because, well, that becomes more difficult when you get inside of the subdivision. You know, but once we get to the main ones, you know, maybe it's the first five and then the three right across the street or something, then coming in or one. And then we say, those have to be, and then after that, we, you know, so we program, I'd say, the 50%.
Yeah.
Okay, but we'll pick the first five for sure. And then we'll program the rest and we'll have that stuff to, to show the trustees and, and, no, like, I think.
Yeah, you might have that something.
Yeah, so at that one, we'll shuffle it up. But we can commit to that 50% with the first, I don't know what lot, lot numbers they are, if we want to have that in anything, but the first five from, and then. And then that lot 28th, I'm really on the business heartburn, I think. I mean, it's, it's obviously the one that has the big financial potential impact. And having key slides, something that helps to publish rules. So was that just those three issues? Um, so, was that just those three issues?
Yes.
So, I'm, I mean, I'll leave that up to you on, on that, that, that extra lot. On whether that makes sense to you or not. You're welcome. So, we'll get rid of lot twenty-eight.
Thank you.
Just curious.
What?
Would it be possible to get rid of, sorry, not speak editor.
Matt.
Uh, sorry, Matt, Matt Gerken, engineer, uh, for the project. I was curious if it would be possible, instead of lot twenty-eight, to get rid of lot thirty-two? And maybe, I mean, I don't know if you make this a little bigger or whatever, but offset the, the cul-de-sac ball up this way? To get these lots a little more depth? And then, maybe you could make this, this one a little wider, but and then keep that one? All right, that just seems like a nicer lot, this one's kind of squeezed, and these are kind of squeezed. But I don't know.
Because that works better with your engineering and stuff.
I, I, I think it would work better for us. But I don't know, I mean, it's still essentially adjacent to the activity node. But I wasn't sure if you guys were dead set on twenty-eight, or if it could kind of be in this general area.
So, you. I, very torn on this. Uh, I guess the reason why I was really thinking twenty-eight specifically was to allow easier, if that wasn't a pre-programmed area, basically, if you had, that it would allow easier access to that activity node.
From, oh, from.
From twenty-eight, yeah.
I got you.
From the formal center. Um, I understand what you're saying, though, with that one is very, thirty-two is very speeded.
Okay, that's close to the river, yeah.
Yeah.
Just like the flexibility to get rid of one adjacent to the activity node, or not?
I, I would have, yeah, I think, I would be fine getting one, rid of one close to the activity node on that sound area, to have a better design right there.
Um, is it possible that we have an agreement that one lot is gonna go away, and then, and you're, you determine what's the best?
Yeah.
Which lot in that general area?
Yeah.
All right. I mean, you would, the thought that, yeah, I, I see your point about that, near the river track, that that would change a little the configuration on the cause that, I see your point. So, um, it still adds to that activity node area. So, I think in theory, they accomplish similar things. Either one's perfect if you're in a four hole. I'd say that we're comfortable letting engineering lay out.
I've never heard of that in engineering office right now.
Yeah, that's not the smallest lot, but it is one of the smallest. The only thing, honestly, that helps it is the fact that I've not just like heard around, so.
I just know there's, there's a drainage corridor that's gonna have to go in here. With this cul-de-sac kind of infringing on these lots. It might shrink the backyards a little bit, if we could offset the cul-de-sac to the north. We had discussed the possibility of looking into that with final development plan, and, and that, when we went into final engineering. So, I just wanted to throw that out there. If there was some flexibility to do it on one of these lots around the activity node, instead of specifically dictating it had to be twenty-eight, that would be helpful for me.
Yeah. They didn't have any. Do we want to analyze that we're changing that NMO? Is that? Yeah, we didn't say anything, we should put it. Final development, or maybe, um, speech number today, or if you want to comment. I think we should put it on there. And as to the language for the side loads? Do you, yes.
Um, that the first, those, those first five need to be side load. And when by final, I would have to define forty-five, forty-six.
Pre-program, fifty percent of the side load of garage lots, and they must be the first lot.
I'll take the first side. That's lots one, two, three, forty-five, forty-six.
Forty-five and forty-six is gonna be different. Because we get them in the lot in the middle.
I was gonna say, because you're gonna read the number, so. The first, yeah, the, the five lots are there. The, all right, all right, one, two, three.
Yeah.
Forty-five, forty-six. Which are the address. So, we have, we have usually write it on our big official paper of what our, um, digits are. Um, I got the original, not the revision in a big. Do you need to put it somewhere? We have satisfaction, and they're right, they have their right plan. Huge, big one.
Yeah, we could have sent it, but you can have some eleven by seventeen, that's enough.
Yeah.
You should just bring a copy of it and put it.
Yeah. Put it with the date, and are you gonna write it up? See, I mean, how would you do that?
We could use one of the ones as a art in any of these exhibits.
Yeah.
The twenty-eighth.
Sure. I mean, you can make it.
Not yet, though, right? You want, you want to copy it after you write the condition.
It's okay, take ten minutes, put that down. Ten minutes, that's. You guys are pretty great. No, it's here, it's here. It's here. It's not, we could get it. Don't really, but I can write it. We do my work today, usually. Um, it's a dollar. Uh, I didn't know what it is, is.
We know.
You're just letting us think that.
You gotta go.
I know. They possibly do the trail, yeah.
But I think, I think. Uh, say, east of that trail. Something else to do, uh, like, um, area.
I would have never thought, I mean, I should be looking at this crazy, that's what I'm talking about.
We don't think it's even, though, because it's still changing.
We're part of the final two steps, and we're moving into the one step. But we're not gonna have to find the.
New York, that's another art thing.
My mind has still been, I, uh, except for this.
Well, Concord does that, and what they go on is what you get.
That's concluded and we made all the conditions on our plan here. So what remains is to have a motion for.
Make a motion to approve VCC 24-006, Seven Hills of Berlin, L L C, Paris, South Jersey, Missouri. 577, Warner Greenway, Los Center. Applicant requesting approval for eliminating the dollar plan to reason parcel 418, 310, 01, 047, 000. Plus minus 61.039 acres from FR1 to R3 PRB. E, E, single family homes. 2338 Cheshire Road, Delaware, Ohio, 43015, subdivision known as Seven Hills of Berlin, including three items added during tonight's meeting. Okay. Item number one, existing low and low area east of the trail will be changed to a standard no maintenance area. Item two, remove one lot in the cul-de-sac area along the west side next to the tracks as to be determined by applicant's engineering. And item three, 11 of the lots inclusive of the five lots entry shall be predefined as side load garages. All 11 lots should be based on.
I'll second that. Okay, Mr. DeFisher?
Yes.
Ms. Kaplan, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
All right, so she passes applications for. We're seeing this and he was telling me, so you want to save that for free or you have everything to do?
Take it or not.
Thank you.
We'll grab, we'll grab it and then we'll, you know, you. Come on.
She took, I thought they should.
Yeah. She's going to make two different options.
No.
Yeah.
All right, so do we have other business being brought up for presentation? For requirement? And we've got any, that's our, over, go ahead, or, um, we've got anything you want to tell us about?
I don't have anything right now. Lots, lots of developer review. Think we're going to be inundated with some of the strong stuff in the near future. Mentally, emotionally prepare yourself.
That's your seat, that's, okay. Wow, okay. All right. Oh, and I'm meeting on the 22nd. So the application that we were expecting to come in on the 22nd is, is not here. So I'm going to propose that we can spend a few grand on a very busy fall. I think a night off would be great, but that's empty off. So it's just, I'm sweet. Anybody disagree with that?
Three.
Now, Tara, we talked about doing some landscaping, she's not here, hopefully we will resume that.
Can we quickly look at the schedule, though, for my plot for the year? Yeah, these probably are extra, but she's, she had, that's okay. So we, so we're getting rid of the meeting on the 25th, I guess. So our next two meetings are on the 12th. So November 12th and then November 26th. And the 26th one, I know that's obviously just probably the last meeting, so.
Not good on that.
Are we good on that?
I can see that's just on the.
Okay, good, okay. All right, and then December. Yeah, it looks like we have meetings that we got. But for December, our meetings typically need a ton of them before the August and now.
So the time could probably be our, like, what are you taking?
Yeah, so really we only have two more meetings left.
Did you want us to take this?
I can see the 12th, I'm 107.
Yeah.
Do you have these already done already for the November 12th?
So. I believe I do. I'll know by the end of the week, I've had four of the 12. I, I believe we're getting something on.
I think there's going to be something at the end of this week.
All right, or here, and then we'll hear it here, we'll hear it on the 12th. And then the 26 is, um, on the next.
Okay. Okay.
And December, anything? December, Dallas, and that was our organization.
Okay.
So that's with the BCA. That's crazy, that's great. That's why I was like, is that I wanted to just make sure. I agree, it seems like we ended the meeting on the election and. Yeah, not this year, thankfully, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, all right. So we are going to cancel the 22nd.
I will say, I'm sorry to bring this up, but I have been doing some research on short-term rentals for the trustees. I have a little document from a couple of classes I turned to send to you guys to read. We don't have a lot of that in the area yet, but it's good to be informed.
It's, it is.
I mean, if I look at why the, the extended stay, I think that's why I almost began the contract, but I think that's what we, I think that of, of that almost.
Most places consider anything less than 90 days a short-term rental, like Airbnb and stuff. Just looking into how we would regulate it.
Okay.
Which is challenging.
So it's more like for Airbnb things?
It is, for Airbnbs and VRBS. Luckily, we don't have a lot of it because there's, although it's a popular area, it's not close enough in proximity to the major universities or the activity centers where you can get a lot of it.
So, and what I have, I don't know if it's correct, is that like the one we discussed a little bit on Roseland was more for honey parties and things.
That is, I looked into that and I could not find it on many of its websites. And I, I'm under the impression that they've stopped, stopped using it as a short-term rental. I've been keeping an eye on it pretty regularly and haven't seen nearly the activities of it.
Yeah, you know, so I was thinking, there's a nice recreation area, I could see wanting to, you know, short-term around your, you know, do a boat or.
Yeah.
Yes.
You know, we used to bike trails, I, I, you know, I'm ready to keep it.
The one applicant that wanted to do something around Cheshire just asked, like the market, the vet, everything, that one track, he had, he was looking at that one portion that could be rented. He was thinking short-term.
Yeah, I wanted.
Yeah, that, that was the MC.
I think it's going to happen.
The, the one in Roseland you're talking about, is that the A frame?
That's the A frame.
Oh, that's kind of for sale.
Yeah.
So that's probably why there hasn't been, because they, they're selling it now.
Okay, that would make sense, yes.
I was involved with that go back one. Then the guy decided to put a pond in it.
Yeah, that is right.
He decided to put a pond in it, but it was in the septic field.
Oh.
And he dug a pond.
Oh.
And guess what it filled up with?
Oh, gosh.
The health department and I had.
That's terrible. How does that get resolved, right?
We should, don't be here, cool me out. I'll tell you.
Okay. Is there any provisions against lighting on commercial building roofs here that you know?
We have some lighting provisions. I have to look into it.
Because I, and this is kind of random, but over lunch, I've noticed that a lot of the places now are putting light all over their roofs. If that's something that matters, like the McDonald's, um, along 23rd, the new one, the whole roof, every, every like angle is lit up.
Sounds like Christmas stuff that you see.
And I'm not a fan of it, but I haven't looked into it because I just noticed it, but just if anyone was interested in not ha, I mean, you could just light the whole roof up with, it literally looks like.
Like LED lights.
Yeah, it's all the way, it, it looks like a Christmas lights. And then Grismer Auto, for example, somehow has lights all over the roof too, and it's at all night, like, I mean, they close at like, what, eight or six and it's all night. Even the McDonald's, there's enough signage to be able to see the house. So I started thinking if a couple of places do it, everyone's going to start doing it, so. That might be something that you guys might want to look into because I, I never, all my years of remember seeing that, but I don't think we have any provisions against lighting up, I mean, they could maybe light the whole roof bright.
Think the, hopefully the provision of it not being a most of the long-term Jason lots would cover some of that.
Yeah, that's, we, and we have that too, but I think it's low, it's not super bright, it's just.
Makes everything glow.
And it's not like soft lighting, which kind of is down lighting, and it's just actually along the angles, I couldn't believe it. And the Grismer's like, it feels like it's three stories high somehow and it's industrial, but it's along 23rd, it's very, it's lit up like a Christmas tree, so. I feel like that's a little, the next time you drive back, we're in a point, so.
I know exactly what it looks like.
Yeah. I know, I want that here. But that was just a random comment.
I know.
All right, I keep this guy here.
John, are you sure you, I saw you in a few minutes for the last meeting. Other than that, I think, I think for that, okay. Everybody, okay, the journey, push to journey. Okay, the terms, thanks everybody. See you tomorrow. Can I help you?
Once I can turn up, I'll tell you. And have you seen the McDonald's? Did you guys have the lights on?
No.
I was driving home last night, I.